There we go. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, God, for giving us such a beautiful place to enjoy life. However, these chaotic times can often rob us of the joy of living. Only you are big enough to end all of this world conflict. Your word promises that you will keep us in perfect peace when we focus on you. Thank you, Holy Spirit, for guiding each council member and the city staff on the myriad of issues they are facing. Bring unity and peace to all of our government leaders, federal, state, county, and here in Bonita Springs. Empower these leaders with wisdom, strength, and courage. Protect their health and their families. Reward them for the service they are giving to you and to our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
Well, thank you very much. Okay, pledge allegiance. Jesse, you want to pledge allegiance?
Absolutely, sir.
Let allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, about real call, Debbie.
Councilwoman Caramba.
Present.
Councilman Perton.
Good morning. Present.
Councilwoman Carr.
Here.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Here.
Councilman Corey.
Here.
Councilman Gibson.
Here.
Councilman Forbes.
Here.
Okay, approval of the agenda? Any changes to the agenda? Seeing none. Okay. Mayors, welcome. Hi, all you people on the TV screen. We're wonderful. We're glad to have you. The city is our people. We are the "we" people, the "we" the people of this country. And the Constitution says that we run this country, and we do. It's a republic. You all voted to elect us. We all volunteered to serve the people of this community the best we can. And I guess we can move on to public comment items. Do you have any public comment? Yes, ma'am. Come to the podium. Morning.
Good morning, and thank you. And I will give you my speaker form in just a minute. My name is Deborah Giambbo. I live on Bell Rio Drive off of West Terry. I was here two weeks ago addressing the council along with my husband and some of my neighbors on the street. So I am... This comment is related to the community policing agenda item. So first, I would like to thank the community policing department. They have been very present on West Terry and, I believe, making some difference. I also related to that and would like to say that clearly that is not enough. I listened to the rest of the meeting, the last meeting, from home because my husband's foot was swelling up and we needed to leave. And I wanted... And I sent an email of thanks to all of you afterwards for your willingness to move quickly on the issue of crosswalks on West Terry. We're here again, and we will keep coming to try to keep tabs on what's happening. I don't know what the progress is on that. I know that you had said that you wanted lighted crosswalks. And the Assistant City Manager had mentioned that solar crosswalks were clearly a possibility there. And you were very assertive with wanting a timeline and cost for raised crosswalks, specifically raised crosswalks that would cause cars to slow and not go 30 miles an hour over top of them. I see that that is not on today's agenda, although I'm hoping that that will change. I'll be back in two weeks to make sure that we're still making progress on this. My husband also has some information that may be helpful to you as we progress on this issue. But again, I implore you to not let this drop and to be vigilant and keep moving forward on this issue. Our community needs to be safer than it is, and we are depending on you to make it that way. Thank you.
Yes, you have the opportunity. Captain Blake Lee is sitting back here.
We talked outside, yes.
Evening talk. He just came in. Check out what he's doing. He's doing a wonderful job. He has his replacement with him next year. And so please talk with him.
Thank you very much. We did meet outside and had a good conversation.
Oh, good.
And it was very reassuring. I appreciate you helping us to make that connection.
We've got to be safe.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Yes, sir. You're getting along. You got a walker now, huh?
Yeah. Yeah.
A new life.
I went to see the surgeon yesterday. He said it's going to be a long haul. I didn't expect it to be this hard, but I guess I got to... Had to get used to it. It has changed my life completely. I spend the day with my leg up in the air instead of working, instead of doing things around the house and doing all the things that I need to do. My wife does the same. She has to do my work that I do in the house, plus her work, plus take care of me. I didn't think this was going to happen. This is going to happen, and it continues to happen. So I wish none of you ever have to go through this. And so that is my wish. Because, you know, you see somebody with one of these things on your leg and walking and stuff, and you say, oh, he'll heal soon. Well, I'm done with. I had a big project for the summer, and the project is done. It's not going to happen. But anyway, I'm here to give you some information.
This isn't on the agenda today, so I appreciate your comment, and I feel sympathy for you, but...
I thought community policeman was on the agenda, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
This is a comment for community policing agenda?
That's on the agenda.
That's on the agenda. Yeah.
All right.
Yeah. So what I find is that the police has been very helpful. They're being there on the watch all the time, which is good. That's very reassuring. And also... But I also think that's unsustainable. I don't think they'll do that through the year because they have all the things that they have to do. I was just talking to Captain Lee. He said that we have 100,000 people. I think that's what he said, that live in Bonita Springs in this area. That's a lot of people. I was reading an article from the Orlando Sentinel. And last year, 142 people were killed trying to cross on a crosswalk. That was just last year. 142 people that have families, probably have children and so on, okay? So the community is growing, and it's going to get worse if we don't get ready for what's happening, okay? Senate Bill 140 in the legislature in Tallahassee, it hasn't become a law yet that I know of, but they are proposing to put cameras near schools, which we do have a school there. The Bonita Springs Middle School is on West Terry. Cameras should be allowed near a school. They are also in Jacksonville. They have cameras in crosswalks. And I saw the film of people crossing this crosswalk, trying to cross the crosswalk, and the cars flying by. So it's a common thing in Florida, I think, or I don't know, in the United States or whatever, but here in Florida anyway. So we should just get ready for what happened because more and more, every season, more people and more people come here from all over the states. And they have crosswalks that have camera that take pictures of the driver that doesn't stop for pedestrians. And the company also takes care of everything, sending the ticket to the person, to the driver, and collecting the money and giving the money to the city. So there are companies that are doing this already. And so I'm just saying that because I don't think... We appreciate very much the presence of the police in that area, but I don't think it's sustainable. I think that they have all the things that they have to do in the community.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Look both ways and wait for the traffic to spread out before you walk in front of them. Don't expect them to stop for you, okay? Maybe you'll learn that. Don't expect them to stop for you, okay? That's kind of a brain thing, okay? You've got 4,000-pound car coming down, and they've got a little bit of you going to stop that car because of you? Got to use your head. Thank you.
Just so you know, the car was stopping when he started to cross.
The car was stopping. Oh, whatever. Thank you.
The address of the claim toward him is not appropriate.
Thank you. Yes, sir. How you doing? Any good news for us?
Well, apparently I'll be dealing with something less controversial, which is redistricting. My name is Jim Portnoy, members of the council. I am a resident of Bonita Bay, and I live on Bonita Bay Boulevard. And I am here to essentially put a face to the letter that we shared with the council and to reiterate our concern as a community that redistricting be conducted in a way that continues to encourage and support our deep commitment to the community and, in fact, to the extent possible, recognizes that Bonita Bay is an important and longstanding contributor to the community. In addition to being the source of a substantial portion of city revenues and 6,500 residents, we are an incredibly charitable and giving community. We have a Veterans Council. We're major support.
Very good. Very good. It has nothing to do with redistricting. The amount of money you give to the city, the amount of taxes you pay, has nothing to do with redistricting. What it is is the number of people in a district. Mayor. Mayor.
Mayor.
Mayor.
This is public comment, not mayor comment.
We're not supposed to have a dialogue with the speakers, including, I'm sorry, you. That's our policy on the day.
Oh, that might be your policy.
No. Excuse me. It's a council policy.
It is the council policy.
Okay, well, you heard what I had to say.
I did, Mr. Mayor. And I would simply respond by saying that I am highly experienced in redistricting. I understand what the legal requirements are. But redistricting is essentially a prudential exercise in trying to ensure representation across the community. And we are simply asking that our representation be maintained at its current level rather than diminished through the redistricting process. And with that, I thank you, members of council. I thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Good morning. My name is Dave Schallenbarger. I am a resident of Bonita Springs, 3668 Wood Lake Drive. I've spoken to councilmen in the past before, and I come before you today in the same reasonable point of view in support of what Jim said about the redistricting issue. You know, it's on your agenda today. I understand the logic, the numbers. And certainly, Mr. Mayor, I understand, you know, how the whole legal process works. But I'd like to emphasize for you individually that we all come to the city of Bonita Springs with the same goal, the same hope, that we can protect our environment, we keep our community safe, we can deal with traffic issues. Regardless of whether our address is inside a gated community or outside, we all have the same interest. I live in a community, Bonita Bay, that was organized back in 1980. Bonita Springs was a town of about 1,200 to 2,000 people at that time. Rex Sims, an 93-year-old resident, wrote the first chapter of a book that I published in 2015, recounting the history of Bonita Bay, how it came to be and arguably its influence on why Bonita Springs is the way it is today. And I would stand strongly and say that the residents of Bonita Springs have held up their responsibility to the city, that we have performed our obligations as residents and citizens. We vote. We participate in community affairs. We volunteer to improve the social fabric of our city. And I hope that you agree with me that those residents deserve to have equal say in the future of the city with every other resident. And I would speak in support of proposal one in redistricting because I think it most fairly represents the best support for the future of our community. And I only ask your consideration. I understand the law, Mr. Mayor. I understand how things are supposed to work. But I don't think any of you thought you got elected to your office, that your residents of your district elected you because they wanted to come and just not think, not use common sense. So when you consider that proposal, you consider the next 10 years of representation in the city, I hope that you keep in mind that we're all in this together. We all live here. We all want safe streets. We all want to have... Protect our environment, improve water quality. And my community, I think, stands strong with a record of performance in protecting the environment. We've been testing our own water for three years now because we want to make sure the water leaving our community flows into public water in at least as good a condition as it was when it came into our property. We're going to continue that. So we simply want to have equal representation going forward and have the opportunity to have equal effect and governance as we move our city forward to even a better tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Barbara Ogilvy, and I'm here in support of option one for the redistricting as well. I don't believe it will be a benefit to the city to put two large gated communities together. I believe that if you want inclusion with gated communities and non-gated communities, that they should have some representation outside of their gates. I believe strongly that people are elected based on their merit, and it doesn't matter whether you're inside a gate or outside a gate. The elections are fair, and everyone has a chance to run for the positions that they're interested in. And I do believe that it would be better for the city to leave District One and District Four separate. And so I support option one, and I hope you make the same decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, council members, staff. For the record, Dwight Estman, Paradise Road area. Again, regarding the three alternatives for redistricting, the best reason to vote for alternative one is because the other two alternatives move the people in Pelican Landing into a district that is not up for reelection this year. Those people inherit a councilperson that they did not vote for and can't vote for until 2024. In almost every redistricting issue everywhere, the people are not assigned a representative. Alternative one moves just a very few people from District Six into District Two. Only those few people inherit a councilperson. All the other changes, people will get to elect their own councilperson. The only reason to go with alternatives two or three is to pack two big, wealthy gated communities into one district to minimize their influence. Four of you live in gated communities, about the same percentage, I think, as the city. And I know that all four of you get out and talk and meet with constituents outside your gates. Alternative one is the least disruptive. It has the lowest deviation in population, and it clearly is the right choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Jesse Purdon. You have got the floor?
I have...
Oh, yeah. Yeah, okay, tardy.
All right, no problem. All right, thank you. Ben Hershinson, Abinley... I'm sorry, Abinley Drive in Bonita Springs. Good morning, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I want to start off by saying emphatically that I support either one, alternate plan two or three. Let me tell you why. First of all, based upon what I just heard, let's make it abundantly clear, no one is being disenfranchised. Everybody's still going to have a chance to vote. By the same token, not everybody lives behind a gated community. And as was already stated, it's a... You know, some large gated communities do have an influence on who gets elected. The last three, out of the last four city councillors, three came from Bonita Bay. It's a lovely community. I've been in there, and I have friends who reside in there. However, no matter what happens with respect to redistricting, the voters are going to make their choice. And I think that if we have a new district made up of voters who live in a perhaps smaller gated and non-gated communities along with very many others who live in independent homes, they're not part of any managed operation. I see that as a major improvement over what currently exists. And let's be factual about this. Where a single, very large gated community or voting block can pick the winner in any citywide election or even for the sake of the district they live in. It's simply numbers speak the game. Obviously, I respect those who have a different opinion. But the one fact that must be emphasized is if we have this new plan, either District One into... It will bring up Pelican Landing and Bonita Bay would be in one district, District Four. And the rest of us who don't live in large gated communities and in a community, Gulf and Country Club areas and Collins Estates and other small communities, we have a right to make a choice. Let us have an opportunity at the voting booth to bring somebody that we would like to have from the rankle file members who also have a voice in the city. I believe that the redistricting that will bring along the alternate plan two or three will be more diversified. It would be more heterogeneous than it is currently right now. That, to me, is an advantage for everybody who lives in the Gulf and Country Club area and surrounding other smaller gated and non-gated communities. This is not about exclusion, but rather inclusion of more. And in my honest opinion, I feel, from those who have been, at this particular point in time, underrepresented. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ben. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, councilman. My name is Herb Nelson. I live on Cockersell Drive in wonderful Bonita Springs. We all have the same objectives and the same wonderful feeling about this city, about everything else. In this redistricting situation, I've been to three meetings now. There's something that stands out in the options that are presented before us, and it's very obvious. And see, in number one, there's no change. In number two and number three, there's such a change it's like writing in red paint on a barn door. District Four needs change in the bottom line. We need to take the eastern side of District Four and put it into District One. Both the options of two and three offer that, as well as some other changes. But from my standpoint, being in District Four, that's something that we really need. Common sense tells us that's probably a good option, two or three. And thank you for supporting that idea. Have a good day.
Thank you.
And by the way, I'm the guy that took the header in the parking lot after your last meeting. And I'm still able to walk around good.
Sorry about that.
Anybody else? Okay, I guess Jesse, you're on deck.
Do we have the Pace folks here? How are you?
You need a microphone? There we go. Guys, we've got a great staff.
All right, good morning, everybody. This is an exciting thing for us to be a part of because we've never done this in the city, I don't believe. And this proclamation is believing in Girls' Month for Pace, whereas each year, the month of March is identified as Women's History Month and is a time when our nation reflects on our valuable contributions women make to our society. And whereas Pace Center for Girls believes that all young women are tomorrow's leaders, full of immense potential, talent, and promise. Whereas Pace Center for Girls is instrumental in helping provide a better future through education, counseling, training, and advocacy, and envisions a world where our girls and young women have power in a just, equitable society. And whereas Pace Center for Girls recognizes the unique need for young women and collaborates within Florida's Department of Family, Department of Education, Department of Juvenile Justice, to learn and be supported by communities that believe in their values. Whereas Pace Center for Girls is a 97% success rate of keeping girls out of juvenile justice system and improving the academic success 100% of students. And whereas February 5th, 2022, marked the 15th anniversary of Pace Center for Girls providing services in Lee County. Now, therefore, Rick Steinmeier, mayor of Bonita Springs, proclaims March 2022 recognized as Believing in Girls' Month. So with that being said before, I do want to give you an applause for that. But with that being said, I was at the Pace Board meeting two or three weeks ago. We had Jen Nelson, who's a councilwoman up in Cape, invited me. I met a lot of the board people. I met some of your girls, and I learned a lot about your program. I never had any idea that we had something of that magnitude down here. So I'm happy to do this for you with the city. And as we move forward, please stay in touch with me. But let's hear it for Women Believing in Girls' Month.
Thank you, Jesse. I guess we have a certificate of excellence?
Yes, yes, Mayor. I'd like Lisa Robison to come forward to start, and then I'll be assisting with the proclamation.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're here today to receive two things. To receive first, the reward for certificate of excellency in financial reporting from the Governmental Financial Officers Association. This is the most prestigious award they can award. And while I get to stand up in front of you guys every month and make a presentation, you have an outstanding financial team that does the financial reporting and the presentations. We brought them in today, and we'd like them to stand up to be recognized. And we also really want to mention your former finance director, Anne Wright. She was in charge when this award was received. We apply for it every year, and we have great confidence. We'll continue to get it. And again, just great work. You have a great financial team. They're dedicated to high standards, and it makes it very comparable, very... So that you can benchmark against other governments. It gives a 10-year statistical analysis. It's just outstanding reporting.
Very good. Very good.
Thank you. And Lisa, if you and your staff could join me up here real quickly. We'd like to present this proclamation to the mayor and council. Whereas the Florida Department... Florida Government Finance Officers Association is a professional association founded in 1937 and serves more than 3,300 professionals from state, county, city government, school districts, colleges, universities, special districts, and private firms. And whereas the Florida Government Finance Officers Association is dedicated to being your professional resource by providing opportunities through education, networking, leadership, and information. Whereas Government Finance Professionals Week, sponsored by the Florida Government Finance Officers Association and all the member governmental organizations, is a week-long series of activities aimed to recognize government finance professionals and their vital services as they provide to our state, county, and local community. During this week, government finance professionals throughout the state of Florida will be acknowledged for their hard work, dedication, leadership, and ethics. Today, on behalf of Rick Steinmeier, mayor of the city of Bonita Springs, on behalf of the city council and the citizens, do hereby proclaim the week of March 14th to 18th of 2022 as Government Finance Professionals Week in the city of Bonita Springs.
Only missing is Anne.
Yes. She's in Tennessee enjoying retirement.
Okay, Neighborhood Services, Code Enforcement. Backers, Tony Backers, head man. There we go. Thank you, sir.
Good morning, mayor and council. And today, I'm just going to run through a presentation on our 2021 department statistics and just give an overview on the department. And then I'll hand it off to Captain Lee with... He can give an update on Sheriff's Department. We obviously work very, very closely hand in hand with Sheriff's Office, so there's a natural transition to have the both of these on the same day. I'll try and make this as painless as possible. It's a whole bunch of numbers. The department's had some changes since I was last here. We've had three staff changes. I've been here now four years, and in the four years... I've been here now four years, and in the four years, we'd had no change, and then we had two retirements, and then one person had left. And so to show that, there's myself, there's the supervisor, is Chris Campbell, who everybody knows, the two admin staff. We've now got Michelle Arizmendi, she's taken over from Alana, and Chuck Tomlinson is now working in place of where Peggy Douglas was. So we've now got four inspectors are, and I've actually, we got two new inspectors here today. We've got Santiago Ortiz, who's taken Chuck's area, which is the blue one on the map, and Jason Albert, who's no longer here, has been replaced by Carlos Alvarez, and he is in the yellow area. Angel Cruz is still working in that, the green colored area, and Mike Guerrero is the southeast, the red area. So there's five main areas that our department deals with. Code enforcement, we do the residential rental properties permitting, licensing, fertilizer, the professional institutional landscape, and fireworks, and then emergency management is, is our fourth. And our fifth is the administrative, which is very time consuming, and, and our admin staff do a fantastic job, but with every property transfer that does go on within the city of Benita, and we've had an awful lot of them with, with the real estate market, all the lien searches come through, and that in of itself is, is quite, quite the task. I'm not going to read these all out one by one, but primarily the, we're just dealing with the code enforcement portion of what, what our department actually does handle. The top six of these take up the vast majority of our time. Obviously with, you know, four inspectors, we, we try to triage our time in the best way possible and deal with the most important things, even though everything is important, we try to prioritize. So the top six are the things that we, we spend an awful lot of time on, which is the property maintenance, unpermitted work, which is obviously very important, as well as unlicensed contractors, going down to, to the one that is, is a real bugaboo for our department and for a lot of people, which is the snipe signs that pop up like mushrooms all around the city on overnight, and the inspectors go out, they start very early, they'll be out at six in the morning, trying to get as many of them out, out of the ground as they possibly can. But it's, yeah, that's the least important, but one of the most time consuming. So in terms of stats for--
What do you mean by those signs?
Those are stick in the mud ones, the, you know, abandoned cars.
Buy homes, okay.
Buy homes, yeah. And, and they, they do appear at incredible amount, and no matter how many times we take them down, they will reappear. And they're actually getting to the point where they're getting so high now on the telegraph poles that they're very challenging to take down at times. And our responsive activities, these are the total activities for the field, for the four inspectors, and it has gone up. Our numbers are progressively creeping up. We, we went just over 14,000 responses for calendar year 2021, and let's say progressive pick up every single year. And inspections, we have jumped up markedly from 2020, even though our responses were higher in, in 2020 than they were in 2019. The inspection portion went down, part of that was due to COVID. And what happens when something like that goes on? We just retasked, and we went out and did more proactive stuff as opposed to the inspections. But there's a fair jump from 2020 to 2021, and we're, we're around 5,200 inspections.
What, what are the inspections for? Rental properties or what?
Code cases. These are formal code cases. We do informal and formal. Informal is, the nature of Section 162 state statute is, everything geared through state statute is for compliance. So if we can obtain compliance quickly, it will be what we call an informal. We can knock on the door, talk to the property owner, it may only take two visits, two inspections. That wouldn't even be counted in this data because it'd be informal. Formal is when we don't achieve compliance, then it will go down. So an inspection can be, and, and it breaks down a little bit further on in, in, in this actual PowerPoint. We'll have an initial inspection, which is the, when we get the call or, or we've seen something, the initial inspection is the first inspection we go out to.
Inspecting for what?
To see if there's a violation, if there's a code violation. So it, it could be, it could be anything. It could be an unpermitted roof to tall grass, I mean, the, the plethora of what I showed on the first slide, which is the different kind of calls we go to. So an inspection is when they physically go out to look at something.
And this is initiated by a neighbor or by observation, by the code enforcement?
It can be either proactive, which is observed by the responding inspector, or it's a, a complaint that has come in, yes.
And the complainer has to identify himself, is that right?
Yes, they do. In July, I think July the first of last year, the governor passed an executive order, and it's now state law that the name and address of the complainant has to be provided to code enforcement in order for us to even initiate the complaint.
Does it have to be presented to the people that are in violation?
I don't believe it does, but it has to be--
It's public record.
Yes, under sunshine law, it is public record.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much, Tony.
Response time, and 98% of our complaints were investigated within three days, which is the standard we set with, from receipt of complaint. We tried to get out there, and as you can see, we're getting out there 98% of the time within three days. And I believe the total for the calendar year was, was six, six times we didn't actually get out there within three days. And a lot of that was actually in the month of August, when unfortunately, our department suffered some, some illnesses within that was, that went through the department. And so unfortunately, that, that is what happened. So one of the, the main, I guess you could say, questions we get asked is, why is it taking so long for things to be resolved? And it's a legitimate question, people, people, you know, phone in a complaint, if they phone it in, they could fix that fence within three days. Why is it taking that long? We have to afford under state statute, due process, and the way due process is, is written within statute, which is how we interpret it and implement it, is basically all of these things here. So we have to notice, and we have to give reasonable time to comply. This isn't a punitive action, this isn't a, a citation per se, it's giving somebody the ability to rectify whatever the problem is. Some of these things take time, and some of them don't, but people do take time, and we'll get into that with the stats as I, as I, as I pursue this down. But the best case scenario is only two visits. So we go out there, and it, and it is a legitimate code case, somebody could correct it on the second. That's the best case scenario. The reality for us is it averages four times, four inspections per case. And, and in terms of, from my former profession in, in policing, you can, you prove your case once, and you, you're in court. With this, because this is very different, this is civil law, we have to prove our case each and every time. So if there's four inspections and we go in front of our hearing examiner, each time we're out there, it has to be proven. So there is a time constraint when we're doing on this because we're trying to get stuff done, but we do afford people time. We work with, with the public, and we have a very good relationship for, for a code enforcement department with the public in terms of compliance. And so when we get to the complex cases, they can take months and, or years, and we do have some that have gone on for years. And that is not unusual or, or unique to Benita. This is something that happens in just about every jurisdiction there, and naturally, you're going to have a, a, a section of people that are not going to correct it. And again, we're going to noticing extensive research, and we will continue, even in these ones that go on for years, we're still doing monthly inspections on them. So that will continue, so we still have to continue down that road. And the bottom point there I, I've put in is the administrative assistance is required throughout any process. One of the things that these statistics don't actually capture is the time that the inspectors have to spend on that administrative component. That is filling out the reports, making sure the communication is ongoing between both with the complainant and, and the person who we're dealing with. They maintain that, that all needs to be as well documented within the case. That time is not accounted for in anything that I'm showing there.
Tony?
Yes.
Do you find--
Yeah, ask the mayor, would you please?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
I don't know, yes.
Thank you. Do you find folks, if they don't comply, I mean, after so many visits, or is it just a piece of paper that you send?
Each case is unique. It, it's hard to give a generalization, and, and we also understand, we, one of the things that we do with, with our new people who've come on as well, we, we conduct training. One of the big things we deal with is communication with, because it's, it's a key to obtaining compliance. If, if you just go out there and you're writing out, you know, tickets as people think, you're not going to achieve, in fact, you'll, you'll do the opposite, and you're just going to wind up with just a ton of court cases, you know, hearing cases. We do empathy a lot, we use empathy a lot. Not everybody has the ability in the case when, if a fence is down, you know, these fences are costing $10,000, $12,000. We understand that, so we will give people time. As long as they're working towards compliance, we will continue to work with people. And there are cert, you know, circumstances where we realize, okay, that nothing's happening here, and that precipitates us taking it to the hearing.
Thank you.
Which is this slide here, formal hearing process. And so there, we've, I just kind of covered off, number one, if there is no progress, we do, we will put it through to the hearing examiner. This is a very timely process as well, because we have to notice it within a period of time prior to the hearing. We have hearings every second month, we've increased that, it used to be every, there used to be four a year, and we've increased that now to, to six a year, so it's every second month. And, and the noticing is all, again, we have to abide by statute, so everything has to go in, the due process is satisfied legally, otherwise when we go to the hearing examiner, it's going to get thrown out. So it's fairly complicated for, for what some people think, oh, you know, it's just tall grass. Yeah, but we still have to do exactly all of these, no matter what the case is, and, and ensure, and it keeps the city also in good, good standing that we are operating, and we, we're fair and equitable across the board.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, question. What percentage of the cases every year are repeat offenders of the same problem that they just got convicted of and then start all over again?
I can't give you a percentage off the top of my head. It does happen, it is not that prevalent. And we do have some, some individuals that, parking is one, which we, we'll see, parking off the road, and we do see that, some repeat offenders. There are some individuals that don't necessarily maintain their property to the minimum standard that is required by code, and they will rectify the problem, and then it will go back again. But it's, it's not that high. It, it--
Less than 5%?
Less than 5%, yes.
Thank you.
So I put up the compliance chart, and it kind of breaks out what I've already been talking about with initial inspections. So the initial inspections were just over 1,000, that turned into total into 5,000, almost 5,300 there. And, and then you can see, the reason I did this graph this way is to show how we do obtain compliance. Because from, you're going down from, if you look at initial inspections into the compliance inspections, which is subsequent to the initial. So we'll have an initial inspection, and then we'll have a compliance inspection, and you can see each time it goes down, the one prior to the hearing examiner, we call the HECS inspection, and you can see again, it's dropping down to the point of in 2021, the, we only had six cases that did not comply out of the thousands that we actually did. Which is, now, there are some that have trailed into this year, but in terms of a calendar to calendar, January 1st to December 31st, that is the number that we're looking at, which is a very high rate of compliance. That, that is a good rate of compliance.
Very good, very good, very good.
And I put this up, this is a heat map, I don't like the term heat map, but that's what it's called in, within our system. Not the greatest graphic to look at, but for every incident we respond to, there's like a little pin marked throughout the map. And where there is a higher concentration, you can see the, the blurring and the blobs. Probably no surprise to anyone, it runs along Benita Corridor there, it runs along Benita Beach Road, and it goes up into, into Old 41, into that area. This does not break down what kind of cases they are, it's just in general, this is our code cases. That's, I just threw that up for--
Are those mostly rental properties, or do you have any idea?
As I say, this does not, does not delineate the kind of code cases. This is for code cases, not inspections. So if that makes any sense, rentals are, wouldn't be shown on that.
Still doing rental inspections?
We are, we're still playing catch up from the 16 months of COVID where we're, we're trying to get caught up. As you can see with the workload that's coming in, it is, it's very difficult to catch up with the rentals, but we're working at it, we're chipping away at that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And so an overview to try and break down those numbers, it's been about a 2% increase in the total activities from 2020. There's been a 6% increase in inspections, our compliance rate still remains at 99%, so it is a high rate of, of compliance. And to break down for what the inspectors are doing, they're doing around 20 responsive activities a day, eight formal inspections plus the administrative obligations, which is not factored into that. And, and as they will tell you themselves, they can spend 15 minutes to half an hour actually on inspection, but it could take them 45 minutes to an hour dealing with the follow-up, which isn't captured in there. We're doing around 440 formal inspections a month and 1,200 activities. The interesting thing, I've been running the stats for the last three years, and I'm trying to see if there is seasonal spikes, and very little difference between summer and winter. The nature of the cases are a little bit different. Obviously, we deal with a lot more high grass stuff in, in the wet season than we do in the dry season, but there's very little difference between the summer and winter stats. And that's all I have, if no one has any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And like I said, we work with, especially our--
I think you should use a round of applause. That's not a fun job, is it? Sunday.
It's, it's, it's a great job. But we work hand in hand with Sheriff's Department, and we are very, very appreciative of all the help they do give us, so I will let Captain Lee talk to that.
Thank you. All right, Mayor, City Council, city staff, and the citizens of Benita Springs, on behalf of Sheriff Mercino and myself, Captain Blake Lee, I wish you all a good morning. The Lee County Sheriff's Office and the City of Benita Springs continue to effectively provide enhanced law enforcement services to the city, to our residents. My team and I are here this morning to keep you informed and share with you a brief overview. Captain Levitt will be joining me here shortly, he's also of South District, and he'll be sharing with you the, our deputies' activities, and I'll be discussing some of our successes and challenges over this last, you know, reporting period. We continue to utilize the latest and the newest technologies coupled with our men and women on the ground to keep our community safe. The utilization of license plate reader technology, also known as LPRs, has been a great instrument in our toolbox. I had come before council last time and shared the success that we had, we had, unfortunately, we had a homicide in Benita Springs as a result of technologies that were available to us, but specifically our Benita Springs Community Police and Deputies actively enforcing the laws and doing their patrols. We were able to actually identify not only the suspect, but the vehicle that the suspect had fled in, and through the use of the LPRs, we were able to locate that vehicle and apprehend the suspect within about an hour. That was tremendous. The individual who was no longer in Benita had actually fled to another area of the county, and we were able to go ahead and utilize this technology. This technology as well, we utilize on a daily basis. If there's individuals that have warrants, if we have vehicles that maybe had acted and engaged in nefarious activity in another jurisdiction, and they happened to come through Benita Springs, we're actually notified of the presence of that vehicle, and as a result, we're able to go ahead and effectively address that. Most recently, last week, we had a bank robbery in Benita Springs. Our deputies did a great job, they went out there, they investigated, they developed suspect information, and sure enough, within about 48 hours, through the use of the same technology, the vehicle was located in the area. Again, our Benita Springs Community Police and Deputies were in the area, they located the vehicle, and they apprehended it, this individual. So it is of, of great success of what we're doing and utilizing that technology. Not only did we go ahead and arrest this individual for the crime he'd already committed, but we also prevented him from committing additional crimes. So it's, it's, it's actually, you know, awesome technology that we're utilizing. And this is one of many things. As you all know, the city enjoys the full resources of the Lee County Sheriff's Office, and this includes K-9, aviation, marine, our criminal investigations, our SWAT team, our bomb squad, and I could go on for, for quite a while. You hear the word bomb squad, you're like, well, okay, do we really need a bomb squad in Benita? Actually, yes. Just a couple weeks ago, actually, three weeks ago, we had an incident where someone had called in a bomb threat on one of our major businesses, several hundred people were evacuated from the business. And not only did our team, you know, take over, but we actually had members of the bomb squad go through and ensure that, you know, it was in fact, safe to go ahead and, and, you know, reopen business. So these are not things that we only hear in large cities. These are things that, you know, we, as the Sheriff's Office, utilize on a daily basis, but the City of Benita Springs also benefits from them, you know, as time goes through. Our Benita Springs Community Policing Team allows us to not only provide enhanced law enforcement services, but also the ability to immediately address crime trends and respond to traffic enforcement concerns in a timely manner. And as a result of that, we are very responsive to the community's needs. Unfortunately, early today, you know, you were all made aware of the one incident done on West Terry. We were able to, you know, effectively address the enforcement part of it, you know, without delay. We also, just for your edification, next week, or not next week, next month, that is, is Crosswalk Safety and Awareness Month. We've already worked with our team, and we're going to go ahead and be conducting some additional enforcement in the City of Benita Springs, you know, in those areas that need that attention. So again, we continue to work with that. We do work closely with our community partners, the city staff, Neighborhood Services, you know, Parks and Rec. We have a tremendous relationship with all, you know, our partners, and we have great success, and we rely, you know, greatly on each other. But we also work with our community, and we address quality of life issues, and we work with our community as well for the deterrence of crime. And that's, you know, tremendous. Some of our challenges, of course, during the past two years, we've all been impacted with a pandemic in an effort to safeguard our community and not reduce the number of personnel or the level of service during this health crisis, which I think we've all, you know, seen at one point or another. The sheriff instituted actions to protect the health and mitigate potential exposures to our personnel. These efforts provide or prove to be very successful, and the level of service has not been impacted. So we continue to do, you know, very, very well in that area. We do continue to see a growth, as we can all experience, and I'm sure you experienced just coming here this morning, of our permanent population. And of course, we have communities that continue to be built, homes that are being built. And of course, we do continue to, you know, deal with our current season, our seasonal influx, which has been quite significant. The increase in population creates a greater demand for calls for service, everything from responding to traffic crashes, to disturbances, to just service calls in general, to include medical life-saving calls that we run with our brothers and sisters from Benita Springs Fire, NEMs. And when I say we're busy, we're very busy, and you can see that. We're also in the middle of the spring break, which is another factor that's impacting us on top of everything else that we've talked about. And contrary to popular belief, this is not a one-week event. Okay, however, it's about six weeks long. We're not only impacted by the one week that is given to our local schools, but we're also impacted by the week that's given to other schools at the state and national level. And that tends to spread out over about five to six weeks, and we're literally in the middle of that right now. Benita Springs has become, as we've discussed previously, a vacation destination for thousands of people. And our roads are impacted by this additional influx of people. Our beaches have been extremely busy, and as a result, we continue doing our patrols. As we've discussed before, we have our beach patrols in the area, and we've been very successful in addressing crimes and other violations that are occurring. Just the other day, we had a tragic boating accident off of Benita Beach, and that's where two boats actually collided head-on, and yes, in the middle of the water. However, we did have deputies that were there, and we were able to go ahead and immediately respond and provide, you know, the life-saving assistance, and that was, that's tremendous. I could go on, as you all know, for hours and hours and talk about what, you know, our good men and women do. But I'll just keep it brief, that's just a very brief overview of what we have. And these are, you know, these are events, folks, that we deal with literally on a daily basis. The blessing is, you don't hear a lot of it because it's effectively handled, and, you know, we try to do our very, very best. So with that, I'm proud to say that Lee County Sheriff's Office and our Benita Springs Community Policing Team do a phenomenal job in keeping Paradise safe. I will go ahead and hand this over to Captain Levitt, and he'll share with you some statistics. Yes, sir?
Lee County has a no chase policy. Can you explain how you catch people? How does that work in reality? I understand it's, you know, you go a hundred miles an hour trying to catch somebody going five miles an hour over the speed limit. It doesn't make any sense, people get hurt and killed. But how do you make up for that? Could you have a camera that can recognize the car or something?
First of all, let me provide some clarification, okay? We do chase vehicles, okay? However, there is a policy that's in place, which is, once I explain it to you, it'll make a lot of sense, okay? When there is a risk that is created, okay, on the roadways, and we then in turn go ahead and decide to pursue that vehicle, we have to, our responsibility is the well-being and the safety of our community, of our citizens on the roadway. Okay? We have to weigh what that violation is. And is that violation that this individual committed a violent forcible felony? If it is, and we feel that they're going to go ahead and harm someone else, yes, we are going to go ahead and apprehend them. However, if it is not a violent forcible felony, then the risk that we're going to pose to our husbands, our wives, our children, our parents, it's not worth it. I mean, vehicle accidents, you know, these pursuits, and you see them on TV all the time. They don't end well. When you have an individual traveling a hundred miles an hour, and their focus is on the rearview mirror because, you know, we're behind them, they're not focusing on what really matters, which is what's in front of them. And I don't think there's anybody here in this room that would agree that the well-being, that the safety, that the health of any of our family members would be worth the apprehension of someone that stole, you know, a twelve-pack of beer out of a, you know, out of a convenience store. So yes, we do pursue, however, it's for very specific reasons, and those are evaluated each and every time.
Do you have a camera that is, can reach out? Pick up the license plate and stuff?
Again, it all depends where we're at, and, you know, the vehicles that we're using or the intersections that we're at. So, you know, we do have, and again, we do conduct operations, and then again, there's, we could go on about several different things. But yes, we do have technologies that are available to us to where we're able to go ahead and identify vehicles.
It's a better, it's a better system than you used to have.
Much better, yes, sir.
You lost some officers.
Yes, sir.
In pursuit, and, you know, why cause more problems?
Agreed, and again, it's all a balance, sir. We appreciate you, thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Like Captain Lee said, my name is David Levitt. I am currently his Assistant Commander for South District, and it's a pleasure to be with you all here today. Today, I'm going to be speaking to you about our numbers that occurred from approximately October first of 2021 to February twenty-eighth of 2022. The total calls for service that our Benita Springs Community Policing Officers responded to was approximately twenty-five thousand and sixteen. When we weren't busy responding to calls for service, we took some proactive measures to try and reduce some of the safety issues by conducting traffic operations. Traffic operations are a daily function of the Benita Springs Community Policing Unit. These are conducted in an effort to keep the streets, intersections, and crosswalks safe for the community. Some of the operations spoke, focused on speeding, whether it was red light violations or bicycle safety in general, and the total number was approximately two hundred and fifty-two operations. During the different traffic enforcement, I want to give you a little bit of numbers that covered some of the punitive measures that we dealt with. We issued approximately five hundred and seven uniform traffic citations. We issued one thousand three hundred and eighty-eight warnings. We conducted three hundred and nine field interview cards. We issued sixty-three notice to appear's where they actually have to go to court to explain what they did and why. And we initiated seventy-eight arrests, as well as ten warrant requests. In regards to a big issue right now, crosswalk safety. We took numerous opportunities to focus solely on crosswalks to educate people and to prevent future issues from occurring. Specifically, we conducted thirty-seven different operations. During those operations, we issued twenty-five uniform traffic citations and fifty-two warnings. Community outreach. Community outreach encompasses all of our community contacts other than business contacts. Community police and deputies focus on quality of life issues in all of our communities, whether they're gated or not, beaches, and schools. These contacts are a direct result of self-initiated positive community-enhanced policing. Benita Springs Community Policing Unit conducted approximately four thousand two hundred and one checks. In addition to what I just spoke about, we made time to make sure we focus on all of our local businesses. Business outreach encompasses not only our downtown Benita Business District, but includes all of our outlying areas and the entire business platform for the City of Benita Springs. While our goal is to reach every business on a personal level, some may get missed or overlooked. Please call and let us know, we're always looking for feedback on how we're doing and what we can do better. Recently, the City of Benita Springs was placed on a grid to help our community police and deputies break down each area and to get to know the businesses in that area in an effort to not miss anyone. We found it was more productive if we tasked individuals with certain areas to enhance that focus. To date, the 2020 Census Bureau said that there's approximately five thousand four hundred and fourteen businesses within the Benita Springs area, and we conducted approximately six thousand eight hundred and fifty-three checks to make contact with people, follow up with them about different issues that they were experiencing. When we weren't doing that, we were also participating in different speaking engagements within the community, such as at the YMCA, the soccer complex at the Marni Field, and with different condo associations and gated communities. Also recently, we've had the privilege of adding a Criminal Investigations Detective to our Benita CP unit, which has been very useful. They've been able to partner with our deputies and kind of provide real-time, up-to-date follow-up, whereas before that happened, but now it's on a more personal and a more immediate level. During the time period that I'm reporting to you about, we had approximately a hundred and eight cases assigned to that detective. Eleven of those cases resulted into an arrest. Approximately five of the cases were unfounded. Approximately seven of them were, victim didn't want to proceed any further, and the remaining cases are either inactive, meaning there's not a current lead to follow up on, or there is open cases that we're still working on or something that we call an exceptional closure, which means depending on the circumstances, the case is now closed. Our Christmas program. This Benita Springs Community Policing Christmas program is always a success thanks to all the donations and help from constituents and local businesses. Twenty twenty-one was a very rough year for everyone, but we still received approximately fifteen thousand eight hundred dollars in cash and checks. Approximately twenty-five large bags of new toys were also donated, fifteen new bicycles, and numerous gift cards. With all of this support from the community, we were able to help the following children and families. Our shop with the Sheriff's School of State Contest winners, which I think we followed up on recently, it was wonderful to see the look in everyone's eyes and see those families experience that because of everyone's efforts. There was eighteen winners from that, from Benita Springs Elementary, Spring Creek Elementary, Benita Springs Charter, and Oak Creek Charter School. We also helped nine different families that were in exceptional need and an additional eighteen children in our community. Cafe for Life. Benita Springs Community Policing Deputies attended several food drives throughout the year and the holiday season. Community policing deputies showed their support for the program and offered any assistance to the organization they may need throughout the year, to include our back-to-school backpack program and our holiday gift program. In addition to everything I just discussed, we focus additional community outreach with our beach operations. Currently, the Benita Springs Community Policing Unit has dedicated one of our deputies full-time to the beach operations, and we also have a part-time deputy assigned as calls for service permit. These services to the beach community include ATV and side-by-side patrols, boat patrols, meetings with our HOAs and our homeowners, and then focus on different quality of life issues, because it's a constant battle. But we try to keep up with everyone in regards to our parking, our crosswalks, fireworks, whether it's pets, and just general trespassing in nature. Benita Springs Narcotics Cases. The Benita Springs Community Policing Narcotics Team consists of two narcotics detectives and a narcotics sergeant. They are responsible for the intricate drug-related activity, search warrants associated with drug-related offenses, and most major felony drug-related cases within the city limits of Benita Springs. For the fourth quarter, which ranges from October to December of last year, that specific group worked twenty-nine cases, which resulted in twenty-one arrests and seven search warrants that were executed. The Benita Springs Art Festival is another area we had the privilege of assisting with. Benita Springs Community Policing Deputies once again participated in the art festival held at Riverside Park. The issues we normally face with are traffic, crowd control, and crowd movement. This year, we had zero issues. Benita Springs Veterans Advisory Committee and the event. Corporal Bobby Hunter sits on the Benita Springs Veterans Advisory Committee with eight other members from the city. Hunter, a U.S. Navy veteran, helps organize guest speakers, honor guard, and local VIPs to attend the event. This is a year-long process done on his own time that demonstrates only one example of the commitment to the community from our Benita Springs Community Policing Unit. Bobby's a wonderful example, but we're also privileged to have so many other members that really, really have enthusiasm for their job on a day-to-day basis. The Benita Springs Community Policing Unit participates in the daily festivities and assists with any overflow traffic needed by the committee. When we're not doing all the things we just mentioned, we have to keep up our standards. We have to train, we have to make sure we're up to date and current. Every year, we participate in our law enforcement block training, which helps maintain our core training skills. In addition to this training, Benita Springs Community Policing Unit has participated in the following training to enhance their skills to provide a better service to the community: ATV patrol and bicycle patrol, scene management, commercial vehicle enforcement, crisis intervention team training, and active shooter training. I want to thank all of you for the opportunity to do what we do on a daily basis. It's not taken lightly, and we understand how lucky we are to serve with all of you. Thank you.
You've got the best, you've got the best.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Captain Levitt, hello, Captain Lee. You were talking about crosswalks, and do we enforce jaywalking?
Jaywalking is kind of, the phenomenon of jaywalking is not really a real thing, but what I mean by that is, if you look on the inception of the word jaywalking, it's kind of something that was referred to as slang. And the bottom line is, it's not a safe way to cross the street, right? So the whole benefit of when we're doing these crosswalk operations is to enhance that knowledge, to say, if you look over here, the ground's painted for a reason, we want you to be safe. So when you hear some of our numbers, some people say, well, why aren't you writing more tickets? Or why aren't you making more arrests? Or why aren't you doing more of this? Our bottom line is, we want to educate people, we want to make them safe. And yes, we do make sure we take the time to do that. Is that answered?
Yes, and it makes our city charming, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I was told that we don't have any jaywalking laws.
That's correct. So what you have is you have designated areas where people are going to cross. Unless it's otherwise indicated that you cannot cross, then people can. It is not advisable, clearly, which is why we have designated.
You've got to really educate these people.
Yes.
Don't expect this two-thousand-pound car to stop for you, because you step out in front of them, you know, come on.
Everybody needs to have their own bit of responsibility when it comes to that. But, you know, as you can see with the numbers that we were doing, especially when it comes to the side or the crosswalk enforcement, we were doing that well before, you know, the tragic event here of a few weeks ago. So it's something that we are aware of, we've actively, you know, addressed that, and it's been very effective.
You're doing a great job.
We appreciate it. Thank you all, have a blessed day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How about we take a ten-minute break? Okay.
Mayor, we're on the consent agenda. Mayor on consent agenda now. It's City Council's pleasure for the consent agenda.
I'm motion to approve.
Second. There we go.
Any comment, vote?
I want to, I'll comment after the vote, I'm voting in favor of everything.
Okay.
The ones in the back of the room got hit, I think.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Cumba?
Aye.
Councilman Pardon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Laura.
I would like, I would like to comment on the one where we have an agreement with Lee County in the development of the block grant, and I have a question of the city manager. Could you just, I have some, you know, I understand that there was a delay in, we got two awards, and we did really execute the first one because the Lee County, or the administrative arm of this, and we allocated towards food security, which I totally agree. My question is, what role does a city play to assure that this, you know, that nobody drags their feet again? Because, you know, this food, it's not, food insecurity didn't go away, even though COVID is a lot better. I think it will continue, so what role do we play and do we have a responsibility? That's the question.
So I know Ellie's coming forward, but I think the intent is.
So, I know Ellie's coming forward, but I think the intent is, is that we're going to move forward with a procurement policy to work with local charities to be able to have them assist, but I'll let Ellie kind of go forward.
And schools included?
No. For the record, Ellie McEwen, your public work staff. The program, we have it all written. We have it ready to go. We have been working with our communications department for a, an announcement that the money is available to start going out on the street. In the criteria, we've outlined that the nonprofits have to be food distributors, and specifically to Bonita Springs. We want to serve as many of our constituents as possible. In, in order to spread the dollars fairly and across the board, we've capped it at $50,000 per organization, with the possibility of increasing that, depending on the number of applicants that we get.
Half a million dollars is a lot of food.
Yes, it is.
Are we that hungry?
Yes.
Do we really need that much giveaway?
There, there are shortages that we hear about every single day.
We're hearing there's a need from the community.
Now, we have a, up in Fort Myers, there's a big outfit, right?
Harry Chapin.
Harry Chapin.
Food bank.
Are we involved with them? We have our own representative city.
What I would suggest, Mayor, is what we're going to do is some outreach, and specifically the criteria is going, in order for them to be a recipient, is they have to distribute specifically to Bonita Springs residents. So, we don't want to say that one charity is different than the other at this point. They will have to submit that information for review, and we will guarantee that the resources are provided within the city. If Harry Chapin or whatever organization there is within the county can, you know, demonstrate that they're providing a direct asset to citizens, then that would be on them to provide that information.
Okay, who decides what food they buy? We're going to be buying food with this, right?
There would be a program they would put together of appropriate nutritious foods. That's all in the submittal process. I don't think we would get a specific.
Who's going to handle that? Ellie or?
No, the charity handles. The charity will handle the appropriate nutritious food in this. They're going to put together a plan.
It's all going to be handled by the charity.
For the distribution of the food, yes. What we would do is approve their plan. That's, that's what we would do, and then they provide progress reports, and then there'll be a distribution of funds to reimburse them.
Okay, Fred.
Yeah, the, there's an organization that actually started in Collier County, and they do a good job of vetting to make sure you really need meals and food. But they've now rented the kitchen, commercial kitchen in the Lions Club building, and they're distributing already, they're using money they're raising in another place to distribute in this area, 250 meals a day.
So, at this.
So, they would be an applicant.
So, at this point in the process, I don't think we want to weigh either an application of anyone, or that they need to go through the administrative process and be.
I just wanted to make everybody aware that we, this is just brand-new to Bonita.
And this is going to be advertised to?
Correct. There'll be announcements.
All of these different charities and, it sounds like a good program. How many times can we extend this volunteer buyout? Why is this people having so much trouble moving?
This particular homeowner is building a house out of state, and the cost of materials, or the supply chain to get materials has been delayed, and so he has assured us that April, his builder is assuring him, which in turn is ensuring us, that April will be the last closing date that, that we'll need to have.
Has he been paid?
No. We do not transfer any dollars until we close on the property.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ellie.
Nature Place, I guess everybody's happy with that. What's that, Renner?
We can circle back around, but we voted to, do you want roll call or?
We voted.
Okay, good.
I've been approved.
Okay, Major, Mayor, and the City Council items.
There are no items on the agenda today, so your next item is a public hearing on first reading of an ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs, Florida, updating the district boundaries for the election. City council members in consideration of the 2020 U.S. Census data, and in accordance with Section 53 of the Charter, state and federal law, providing for severability, providing for conflicts of law, codification, scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
I make the motion, move to second reading.
Second.
I prefer A1.
Second.
Second.
Well, we're not choosing, we're not choosing a map. We're just, we're just moving the whole, everything to second.
He said something afterwards. We're just moving to the second.
Yeah, I prefer A1, but that's my opinion.
We have to, we have to talk.
You don't have to vote.
We have to talk.
You have to have, you have to have a public hearing on it. I'm sorry, yeah, you've identified this as a public hearing, yes. So, is there any members of the public? Seeing none?
Well, I want to talk.
Yeah, me too.
So, I think we know that all three alternatives are legal, so what we're faced with is, now that we know that they're legal, which is the most equitable from a policy standpoint. And I'm not going to get into things such as who pays more taxes or whatever, who does the most for the city. But I did pass out to each of you a little spreadsheet, and what it shows is that if you combine District 1 and District 4, basically Pelican Landing and Bonita Bay, you end up with 13,464 registered voters, of whom 12,064 voted in the 2020 election. Now, I'm not picking on District 2 or District 5, nor did I think about leaving out District 6 or District 3, but I would point out that in the 2020 election, we had 4,267 registered voters in District 2, 4,345 registered voters in District 5. Each of them, about 3,200 to 3,500 people voted. And on the far-right-hand column is the voter turnout. So, I think we have to ask ourselves, from a policy standpoint, is it fair and equitable that one council person would represent 13,000 registered voters, 12,000 voters? Other council people have fewer people to represent, and is there a legal alternative that could prevent that from happening, and that would be Alternative 1? That alternative simply moves District 3 a little bit eastward towards I-75 to balance out District 3 and District 6. It makes some slight adjustments, and one of the criteria that is in the report is that, you know, you should consider, one of the goals is changing the district boundaries as, as little as possible, if you can. If you can't, then you can't. But there is a legal alternative to do that, and that's Alternative 1. And so, I'm simply suggesting that it's not fair and equitable to have one council representative representing more than three times the number of registered voters as other two council representatives are. And so, I wanted to get that on the record and get everyone's reaction to it. I think Amy wanted to also talk at this point.
Yeah, I'd like to say something.
The point that Chris brought up is an interesting one, and one that I didn't even look at at all. So, it's, you know, I, it's a very, I think it has weight. I wanted to just point out to the council, my experience I have had, because I'm from, I'm in District 1, obviously, and what happened when I was elected. And in all honesty, when I was elected, I wasn't as familiar with the whole of Bonita Springs as I was with my gated community. But I think I'm a better council person. I think I've been more successful here in advocating for the entire city because of the nature of District 1. And when I first got, for those of you who don't know where District 1 is, it's across the, basically the northern boundary. But what is wonderful about it, and which I value, is that it has such a wide variety of everything: lifestyles, housing structures, topographical features, socioeconomic levels. I contend that that variety has made me a better counselor, and I think it would be a shame to change that and make either of the District 1 or District 4 be very homogeneous, all right? Like in District 1, we have, this is what I have had to deal with happily, and I learned so much about Bonita Springs. We have an aggregate mine. We have Spring Creek. We have Estero Bay Aquatic Reserve. We have the Gulf beaches. We have a bridge that's going to be renovated. We have gated communities. We have manufactured housings, two neighborhoods, two of them. We have an agricultural area. We have multifamily, single-family, high-rises. We have postage-stamped lots, and we have huge lots where you could have horses. We have commercial properties, and we have farming. I contend that there's not another district in all of Bonita that has all those kinds of things. We, in addition, we have a notable first-class resort in the Hyatt, and we're going to have another one, Rich Carlton, all in District 1. So, it's made me have to think of things in a very comprehensive and inclusive way that I think is very positive. So, I would not want to see that changed. And again, I'm term-limited, so this is not going to affect me where we go, but I, from my own experience, I think that we have helped Bonita Springs be what it is. So, whether it's nature, the DRGR, where our aquifers are, our drinking water wells, every one of those things are an issue. And I think that because I have that responsibility, I'm able to bring a very broad decision-making process to the surface. So, I am not in favor at all of combining the two major gated communities into one for that reason alone. And I hope that that's, will be agreed to in the future. It does normalize the population pretty well, and, and again, because I do focus on inclusivity and accepting everybody for what they, they are, I think that's a better thing for the city.
Okay, thank you, Amy. Make a motion and move to the second reading?
You already have a motion.
Will you vote on that?
Do you have a motion?
Okay, Fred.
I'd just like to make a comment, and I'm expecting the consultant to address this, but there were about three things that we could do and take in consideration. There's things we're not allowed to take into consideration. One of them, as I recall, was that the goal was to have a compact districts. District 6, District 3, which are skinny, both of them end not wall-to-wall of the city, but roughly in some middle point. It's going to shift a little bit for District 3 towards 75. District 1 goes all the way from the Gulf to the very far extreme east end. District 6 has got the same thing that Amy has. We've got commercial. We've got varying degrees of income. I think when you talk about 2 and 5, the problem that's, that we have as a group is that there's one other thing you can't do, and that's dilute a minority voting or vote population percentage. There's no other real land that you can put in to either one of those districts where you're not going to end up diluting. Would we like to make them bigger? Absolutely, but we can't do it. But there is two sides to this story. I don't feel violently in favor of 2 and 3, but I'm certainly feel that they're well worth considering to have advantages to them.
City Attorney?
Just rather than maybe, I can probably address this rather than Kurt. I just want to make clear that what we have is three options. All three meet the required tests, so all three are, are available to you. I don't think we need to really discuss going into other options that we really kind of beat that, that horse to death from a technical standpoint. So, at this point, it's a policy decision at your, at your second meeting, which one you're going to adopt. Now, that, because that one is the, the meeting at which you're hoping for additional public comment and to get the final solution, I would, I would, my recommendation is not to eliminate any options at this point, but you have, all three options are available. So, you know, all the concerns that are raised by all the council members are valid policy concerns, and you can use those to select any of those three options, but those, those three options are all available to you. I wouldn't try to discount any one of them based on the technical criteria. They all meet those legal and technical criteria.
This is the first reading. Do we have public comment?
We've had public comment already.
We had that already.
So, you have, you have a motion and a second, which at this point just is to move it to second reading.
That's right.
So.
That's Jesse.
Yes, I just, this redistricting process has been very interesting. Each district in all three models have significant criteria size and distribution factors. It's clear to me that despite this ongoing narrative that somebody's losing something, that's absolutely not the case. Everyone can still run. Everyone can still vote. The idea that because your district is certainly currently bigger, that somehow, you know, you're able to better represent your district, as if we don't all vote here collectively on citywide issues every single meeting. Representation is based on population. It's not based on how much money you have. So, the idea that, you know, look, money can buy you a nice place on the beach. It can give you private parking. It can give you a lot of things, but it doesn't entitle you to anything. The fact that I've seen so many people with a straight face on this dais and in my email state that because they are a larger contributor to what we do as a city, that somehow they should be guaranteed more of a vote, is just so ridiculous to me, and it's so condescending to me, and it shows how out of touch people really are. This is not exclusive. This is more inclusive. The guy in Conchilshell, I don't even know him. He hit it right on the head, you know? Ben Hurstism, you had a very, very eloquent argument. The idea that somehow District 1 has a seat and District 4 has a seat, no. Nobody has a seat. Nobody's entitled to anything in America. You work for it. You know what? District 2 has one HOA, and I can't even get into it. But you know what? Rosemary Park doesn't have an HOA. You know what I do? I go down there and I talk to them, and I meet them. Being on a board seat in HOA doesn't automatically entitle me to a seat. I have to go out and I have to meet my people and I have to work. That's part of it. So, this idea that because there's more money over there has hit me the wrong way from the first email that I got, because that's not how this works. I represent people who are hard-working people, and I'm right here next to you guys. Money doesn't matter. None of that matters. What we're talking about is a plan that we get to do once every 10 years. The purpose of that plan is equal distribution throughout the city to ensure that these districts are even. Nowhere, anywhere, Charter or anywhere else does it say anything about, based on your contribution to the community, you get to keep one of these on an indefinite basis. That's not America. That's not my city, and I don't believe that that ongoing narrative should continue. So, I, I absolutely, I agree. We shouldn't pick which one it is today, because I want to have an open mind about this. I don't have a predetermined answer. I, I wasn't opposed to one. I honestly wasn't opposed to one until I started hearing all the people who were, had these arguments about why we couldn't. That's what made me start paying attention to this, to the way that I am. This isn't a city of have-and-have-nots. Nobody is entitled to anything.
Amen.
All I've got.
Yes, you want to chime in now, too?
I would. I just want, I am so sorry, sir. The picture of the man on the monitor, your name again?
Kurt. Kurt Spencer, your consultant.
Kurt Spencer. Thank you so much for your work. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And am I allowed to call you, like, with Carly and talk?
Of course.
Oh, yes, yes.
It's absolutely fine with me.
Thank you, sir. Great work. Appreciate it. Great work, appreciate it.
Well, just, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Moves to the second reading.
We're going to move to the second reading, yeah?
Kurt was speaking, I thought.
Just to say that I'm happy to answer any questions that any members of the council might have at this time.
It is, it is the case.
Yeah, I have a question.
Look, just.
Is it, we could, we're not supposed to count registered voters either, are we? It's population.
It's population.
Well, but Fred, let's get realistic here.
Pardon?
Let's get realistic here. The pop, the registered voters exceed the population, the mean average population that we're using to determine district size, okay? We took fifty-four thousand, we divided it by six, we get to nine thousand. Now, if you combine District One, Pelican Landing, and Benita Bay, you get to thirteen thousand registered voters. If you'll remember, in 2020, we had the start of the COVID pandemic. A lot of people didn't come down that are registered voters here, or a lot of people went home early because they were afraid of what was going to happen with COVID. It's, it's got to be unusual that, that the number of registered voters in a district exceeds what we're trying to do here by over four thousand people. And the actual number of voters exceeds the nine thousand by over three thousand voters. All I'm saying is, yes, all three plans are legal. I'm not raising the, the wealth argument, the taxes argument, or anything else. What I am saying is, why is it fair that thirteen thousand registered voters only have one representative when there is an alternative, Alternative One, that more equally balances out population that way? And the second thing is, as a council person, okay? Is it equitable that one council person is responsible for, for taking a look at thirteen thousand people to try to figure out what the issues are, the concerns are? And we have a couple of districts where the population in terms of registered voters is much less. I'm not saying we use registered voters as a basis to this, to, to, to develop the, the boundaries, but what I am saying is that we have an alternative, Alternative One, which I think more equitably distributes population, is a legal alternative. That's all I'm arguing. Yeah, I would, I, I suspicion the problem is, a lot of the people that are voting here are not what you call full-time residents where they're counted in the census population. Now, I would say that's probably true of District Six, which I think right now has got more people in it than, than any other district.
But Fred, whether or not you're here full-time, if you are registered as a voter in Benita Springs and in Lee County, you are a citizen of this state, you are a citizen of this, this, and you deserve representation.
We have to follow the census data.
We are following the census data if we select Alternative One. Alternative One provides a more equitable result.
But we don't have a compact district.
It doesn't have.
Doesn't have to be.
Goes wa- go see this, the ocean to the East End.
I would, I would, what I would recommend at this point, because the conversation's not discussing the motion that's pending, is vote on the motion. If the motion fails, a, a alternative motion can go forward.
I'll hear from Gibson, though, he's the only one who didn't talk.
Yeah, Councilman Gibson's the only one that hasn't spoken, but if the motion passes, then the conversation should continue at the second hearing. But I just want to point out that we're not, unless we're asking a question.
Yes, Mike, everybody else changed, except me.
I just had a question about how the registered voters got to be higher than the population. I was wondering, did you deduct out what would going into District One? Because if it's, if there's thirteen thousand registered voters in what would be the, you know, District Four and say Alternative Two or Three, how, how can you have thirteen thousand voters if the population is only nine thousand, two hundred?
Because, think of it this way, Mike, we have thirty-four hundred homes in Benita Bay. We have about the same number of homes in Pelican Landing, maybe a little more. I can't remember the exact numbers, but let's say it's thirty-four hundred for the sake of argument. So you've got sixty-eight hundred total homes, and you also have Cedar Creek, and you have Highland Woods that are in District Four, that would also go into, that it gives you another thousand homes. So you've got seventy-eight hundred homes. Now, assume that, you know, a little bit less than two residents per home, so that produces a, a population.
But yeah, population isn't number of homes, it's people living in it. You know, the census just figured out how many people live in each home. And you have to live in that house in order to be a registered voter at that house. So I don't understand how you can have more voters than you have population in a district.
Because there, because people.
It's usually less.
Yes, it is. And the reason was because of COVID, that it delayed the start of the, remember April First is Census Day? They had trouble recruiting enough people to work the census. The census got delayed until April to start. It got from April to July, if I remember right, when they really hit it hard. But by that time, we were in full-blown COVID.
But that's what we have to base our decision off of, is the census.
That's right, and that's why, oh, that's.
He's absolutely correct.
Well, he's absolutely correct.
It's the population.
And Alternative One is that population, it's just saying.
All, all the alternatives are, they have the breakdown of the population in each one.
All right. We're not arguing that, that the three alternatives are not based upon the census, they are. We're simply saying, how do we want to do an equitable representation and what's most equitable among all three alternatives?
But, but see, we don't represent the voters, we represent the population. So e- even though, you know, say I got voted in by three thousand people, I don't just represent them, I represent everybody in my district, which, you know, it says it's roughly eighty-six hundred people.
And then I would represent everyone in my district if you combined it, which would be somewhere north of fifteen thousand eight hundred people.
Well, no, because on, on Two, Alternative Two, it would be nine thousand, and Alternative Three, it would be nine thousand two hundred also. So I mean, it doesn't really change because it's based on the population. But that's all I wanted to bring up, was I, I just don't see the, you know, the fuzzy math with the whole voter thing, and that it's all based on the population. So that's all I wanted to say.
Can we move to the question if everybody's done?
Yep.
Well, I have, I have another concern, is that the subject of the ordinance is the map.
Correct.
And I don't know how we move to second reading if we, if, if we're not going to pick a map.
You, you have three options, any one of those three can be selected, as long as they're.
Then how are you going to give public notice about what the map is going to, you're not going to have a, a chance for public comment on a map we're going to pick?
Quite the opposite. They have two weeks to reach out and, for us to communicate with our constituents on how they feel about it now. Instead of having a predetermined, hey, we're going to do this, now we have, it could be any of these three, and now all of us, who I haven't made up my mind yet, now I have the opportunity to talk to my constituents and consider everything that I've heard here today. So I mean, it's giving the people more time to talk to us, to change our mind, or convince us of how they want us to vote. It's, instead of trying to predetermine what, what we would like to do.
Then I will suggest that we move second reading and the vote to April twentieth. If people, since people now are going to have to figure out on their own what map best represents them, because we're not doing it, then I suggest we add an additional meeting for public comment.
All, all the readings of this have.
Public comment.
Have public comment, and everybody's had the same information we've had from the get-go, so I don't see a reason to move it.
We've had a public meeting on it also.
We've also got a motion on the floor.
Oh, wait. So, let me, let me break down what we're.
Can I call a question or something? This is ridiculous.
Let's, real quick, you have a motion on the floor, a second, and to move it to the second reading. You have a new motion, which would be an amendment to the original motion, to continue that second reading to the second meeting in April. So if there is no second to that, then that motion fails, and then you can call the question.
Can I call a question on the first motion?
No, 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 you want a second on.
Is there, is there a second to Councilman Corey's?
Exactly, we moved.
If there's no second, then unless there's no objection, we can just call the roll call. If there's continued discussion, then, then a mo-, then a motion to call the question would be appropriate.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Purdon?
And I want to, I would indicate that I'm good with all three, and we'll make a decision at the last meeting.
Correct.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye. And could we have more color distinction on the maps?
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Cory?
No.
Thank you.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye. I think it's a good idea to have a second version, it's got the colors, the right ones, not, not the old colors.
Did we do it?
That's the six, one.
Motion carried to the second reading. Thank you.
I just want to clarify, if we change colors, there will be no change to these three?
No, no, yeah, just like to make it distinctive, because like one and four look the same color.
But still keep the, a version that shows what we have.
Yeah, can we, we have special glasses, show the real ones.
Oh, Sam.
Okay.
Okay, next is City Attorney.
City Attorney items, you hope you got something for us.
I, I've got, I've got two just quick updates. The, the first one is that the closing for Rooftop at Riverside, Lemon Tree Parcel is scheduled for tomorrow. We'll be executing some of the additional documents tonight, including the requested change of development agreement that was approved by the council.
Will you get the money tomorrow?
Yes.
Oh.
Also, there is a, an interlocal agreement going to be proposed with Lee County. If you recall, we approved the, the state's plan for the opioid settlement. The city, in approving that, also helped Lee County become a qualified county, which means that they're going to get significantly more money from that program. And the county attorney's office has reached out to me to get a list of charities and other, other organizations within the city to make sure that some of that money comes back to Benita. So I'll be working with our offices to come back.
Very, very good. City Manager, we got, Lisa?
Yes, please, Lisa, if you would come forward. This is the presentation of the January financial report.
Good morning.
Very brief presentation this morning, this is our January financial report. We do try to give you all the same visual slides so that you can, we can identify any benchmarks, any changes, any significant changes from, from month to month and from year to year in a lot of the slides. As we've spoken about before, this particular slide shows that we received a significant amount of our real estate taxes in the beginning of the year, and so this, this pie chart will actually even out more as we head throughout the year. We collect a lot of our other revenues on a monthly basis, so it takes a little time for them to catch up. This is a wonderful slide, it does general fund revenues, again, that's our regular recurring operating revenues, fiscal year-to-date, current year versus prior year, so it helps us really to identify significant trends. As you can see, very consistent so far, which is a good thing. And then also, this is our general fund expenditures, similar to the last slide, current year, fiscal year-to-date, as compared to prior year, fiscal year-to-date. And again, you can see some significant trends. The only significant trend that we see on this one is physical environment, and that's actually where we purchased, this particular month of January, we purchased our pumps, our stormwater pumps that we had been procuring and working on, so that's the difference from year to year. That happened in this year. Restricted revenues, these are our revenues that are restricted for specific uses. The two significant items here, which are consistent with similar monthly slides, building permit revenue, that's a planned decrease, that fund balance is going down as we have planned for, and the road impact fees, very significant increase over prior year, again, just great for. Yes, sir.
Impact, road impact fees, now that's the money coming in, or that's the money that's in this hill?
That's money coming in, money coming in. We have a cash slide as well, so that'll show you fund balances. And again, our, when we get to that one, oh, there it is, right there. So cash balances, this is the last three fiscal years of cash balances. With balances, those are not running totals, as you saw before, these are snapshots in time. So what it gives you is where we were the prior year and the year before, so it is a little small, so I apologize, but the road impact fees, since this is a balance, it's actually not only funds we've collected, but funds we've dispersed for their intended purpose. So as we do road projects or projects that are approved to utilize road impact fees on, those get dispersed. So this is a snapshot in time, so just because our revenues have gone up, maybe our, the timing has been right so that we're dispersing those funds for the project that we have. So it's a combination of two things here. What you'll note on this slide is that we actually updated it, and maybe I'll break it down so it's smaller next year, but that we added the general fund, unassigned fund balance, we gave you all a slide last time. That is the newest number that we've developed in our audit. We now feel comfortable, it is still preliminary until we finalize our audit, but we feel comfortable releasing that to you all, and it has gone up. And again, as in prior years, that's because all the good news we're giving you monthly, our revenues were over projections, the economy over the state projections, great news, and our expenditures tend to trend lower than we budget. Again, both positive financial news, but that results in a, in a higher unassigned fund balance, which again, great news. And the final slide, this is, these are our significant revenues type by type that are also having significant increases. These trends are similar to what we saw last year. Again, just great news continues, and we will continue to watch these because we're not sure how, you know, recent events will impact these, but these are statewide trends that we're seeing. Yes, sir?
Lisa, have you been able to gauge the impact of inflation on the cost of running the city?
We're, we're looking at that. I think each, each different operational facet that we have will probably have a, a different percentage change. Our construction projects that we are seeing, when we come to you as bids, those prices are, are going up significantly. So it's a constant battle, the city manager may want to add something about the citywide.
So, so what we're looking at is the supply needs as well, it's not just the construction projects we have. I mean, I think you've heard, for example, even as far as special events to occur, there's contracts involved with those, that the price that we've seen, anywhere from ten to twenty to thirty percent increase in costs. So I think what we're doing is, each department's doing an analysis now as we prepare the continuation budget for you for the summer. So there, there is going to be some change in that, and as we're getting our estimates together, you know, for example, continuing maintenance contracts, we're trying to get all those costs accounted for, so that we'll be able to propose that to you during the budget process.
And I think what we all agree on is the, the fact that our unassigned fund balance has gone up because of the positive economic trends that we're seeing, we're gonna, you know, that's going to help us hopefully prepare and whether be in a better position as we do head into increasing costs, which we will see pretty much across the board.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Lisa?
Thank you.
City Manager?
Yes, I just have a couple of quick announcements, is to remind everyone that this evening is the Lee County 2020 grant application, the, the city is the applicant. Myself, Matt, and Ellie will be present at the meeting, we will be there just to answer questions. And I, I do recognize that Councilmember Corey is going to be there this evening as well. I wanted to remind everyone, March nineteenth, from four to seven PM, is the Bamboo Crossing workshop, public meeting, community public meeting, and that will be onsite at the Old Bamboo site there. We just. We just began the kickoff of our city branding and gateway initiatives. We've begun to have some individual meetings with council to get your direction, thoughts, and feedback. We will be here shortly planning a public workshop so that the public can interact. We will then have a presentation to council, and then we'll be doing some outreach to many of our advisory boards as they play a role in the branding initiative of the city. This would go all the way from gateway features to points of interest within the city, to street signs and identification of our parks and wayfinding. And also, then I needed to announce that it is that time again. It's been seven years, and we, under state law, are required to initiate an evaluation and appraisal report of our comprehensive plan. So we will be doing some outreach on that as well. We also will be bringing forward a scope of services to you all to contract directly with Florida Gulf Coast University on that project. So that will be coming. Anyone who needs additional information, just wanted to make sure that was out there, will need to. It will be a, quite a lengthy process that will take us into next year. That is just the report. Beyond that, many of you recall, we recently just finished up the amendments. That is step two. So the first step is a report. There is significant population change that will be, have to be accounted for within the comprehensive plan.
Is there a bid process on that, or?
We, we are able to direct contract with Florida Gulf Coast University, who has the, the tools to be able to help us with that. So that, that would be our recommendation.
Okay. Anything else, city manager?
That's it.
Public comment? There we go.
Again, for the record.
Down on you.
Again, for the record, my name is Barbara Ogil. And I just want to respond to some of the comments that were made earlier. I do not live in a gated community. I live off of Carnoustie Court. I do believe that representation is available to anyone who wants to run for public office. You have the right to run for public office. You meet with the people, you get the votes, you get the seat on the council. And, but, I also believe that combining two large gated communities into one block will not represent the city. As Amy Caramba stated, you learn more when you can get out into the city and learn what the problems are, what the solutions are, who your constituents are. You shouldn't be punished for living in a gated community, and you shouldn't be punished for not living in a gated community. We are all residents of the city of Benita Springs, and we all have an interest in what this city does, what the future is, what the plans are. And the reason that some of us come and speak at all these meetings is because we hope eventually you might listen to some of the things we say and count them as being important for the people that we represent. I'm not up here just because of myself. I'm up here because of my neighbors, the people in my community. And, and I appreciate the fact that you all do this work for us and for the city. But I still believe that putting a block together is not in the best interest of the future of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come on, you could get, get, get your running shoes on here. Guys, we, you gotta wait.
Again, I'll speak on the issue that was just addressed. Regardless of everything everybody said, we have seven city councilors. The mayor has one vote. He represents 55,000 people. Everybody who sits up there should vote, which is always in the best interest of the greater good, of the, the greater population. You do that. That's a tough thing to do. But let's, again, a fact that really faces me all the time, as, and this goes back many years ago, when I first moved here, some 18 years ago. And I remember bringing up a consideration of redistricting, and I remember the city attorney at the time said, oh, no, no, not now. Wait four or five years. Well, I waited four or five years. And large gated communities have a lot of influence by the very nature. They have a captive audience. They behind gates. That's not equal accessibility. Let's be blunt about it. You have a large captive audience, and as a result, some of the people who spoke this morning talk about influence. Yeah, you have influence. They have influence. Benita Bay has influence. Pelican Landing has influence. But then you have this whole varied combination of others, others. And that's the chance I would like to have for the district that I live in, because there are a lot of people who don't even pay attention to anything. And I think that's going to change. And again, I look at the results of the last several years, when you have people representing the district you live in, who, who got elected predicated upon where they live. I really believe that strongly. And the results, I think, of one of the elections kind of shows that, that there is influence. And that influence, we heard a lot about that this morning. I think if anybody, if anything, I think some of the speakers actually made a case for making a change, because they admitted the fact they have influence. And when you have influence, you very, you don't want to give it up. All I'm asking for is the influence of those of us who live in either gated, small gated, non-gated, but a lot of people who don't live in any kind of managed community. And that, to me, that particular group, I honestly believe, has been underrepresented. And that's why I, I support either options two or three, because that now gives us the opportunity that we have not had before. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Anybody else? Are we ready to adjourn?
No.
No?
Mayor and.
Oh, okay, mayor and.
And then. And then public comments, and then German.
We did public comment.
Did we do minutes?
I got the public comment and the headed, headed reports. Yes, Amy, you have any report?
I have a couple of things.
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay. I did attend a Citrus Park Homeowners Association meeting with John Dolmer. It was very interesting. It's actually called Bell Tower now. That's one of, it's a manufactured housing on the eastern border of my district. And I want to thank John Dolmer for his participation. That group is very active and is very interested in what's happening along Terry Street. And so I think when we go to the design phase of the, to execute the, the grant that we got to complete the east, the eastern end of it, they want to participate in there. I also attended a Horizon Council Executive Board meeting, and it generally, the, the reports were supportive of the fact that, that Lee County is doing very well. They announced some new corporate entities that are coming in. A thing that was pointed out that I think is of interest, and maybe the council would be interested, is that Lee County is reviewing their comp plan in particular. They're, they have a draft of their economic element, and I have a draft plus the existing one, so I'm going to distribute it to Arlene. And if you're interested, she could distribute it to you. It's similar, and I hope that you got the, the link to the National Flood Insurance presentation that was given the, the meeting before. It's a similar kind of thing. So that's basically it. I have nothing else to say, just that's what I've been doing in, in between our meetings.
Fred, you got anything to add? Amy?
Yeah, on the, March the 31st, which will be a Thursday, I want to encourage any, all of our city council members to come, but the, our Southwest Florida League of Cities chapter is having a visit. They'll be our honored guests, and they will speak. The current president of the Florida League of Cities will be there, and what's called the executive director slash CEO of the Florida League of Cities will be there as well. So it's an opportunity to meet those people, hear what they have to say. There'll be a good lunch. It'll be at the Crown Plaza Hotel. There'll be a buffet, and you, and there's no limit on how many staff can come. So that's up to Arlene to make the limit. So, but I think that the discussion today was good. I do think that if you consider this thing about registered voters, you have to look at all the districts, and prob, and I think Chris is right. Because of COVID, you didn't have people that should have been counted in the census. They weren't counted. But we're supposed to follow the census. I will agree that option one, we'll follow it. All three of them do. So we'll see what happens when we vote.
Jesse, you got anything? Mike?
I'm good.
Sorry.
I was just saying, Fred, could you distribute the information on the Florida League of Cities? Distribute the information.
We'll hand, we will. We'll distribute the invitation for the Florida League of Cities meeting on the 31st.
And what now? The, the location?
No, we'll distribute a, we'll ask if anyone would like to register. We'll assist, staff will assist with that.
Yeah, we need to get that into them pretty quickly here.
Okay, Laura Carr?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. This weekend, we had the Blues Festival. It was great. And I thank Laura Taylor and her staff for doing such a wonderful job, and Kevin for, you know, just doing his thing. And the music was wonderful. Last night was the annual meeting for the BSU. They're doing fabulously. They're, you know, moving money around. We could get you to talk about it, not me. But we did have a reelection of Richard Gardner and Larry Kolesk, Kosk, Kosalia? Kosalia, you know, Larry, Lawrence Kosalia. And Mike Malloy is our new member of the BSU. And lastly, I'd like to say happy birthday to Arlene. I know I wasn't supposed to, but I'm sorry.
Yes, Chris?
I'm good.
You're good?
Happy birthday.
Okay, I ain't nothing to add to this, so thanks a lot. Adjourn.